Firstly, well, we're meeting on the 30th of September, and it's gone quick, hasn't it? Where we got to September, there were years, I'm going to be honest. When you seen yesterday, we were talking about a spring.
Yeah.
We've got anyone in the public session. And, and after more increasing of the question.
Well, two things I was going to bring up, there's three now. First of all, I'd like to wish Lucy happy birthday. Secondly, I'd like to thank the fans committee and the town council for their sponsorship of the Christmas parade. And through that, we actually produce and sponsor the best dress window competition in Buckingham and the best dress eatery. The idea of this is to highlight and raise the profile of small businesses in the town. I think it's very worthy cause. Um, I'm also here on behalf of one or two of the traders. Obviously, the charter fair when it comes into the town has a big impact, and they can't have a market there. And I hope that the council and the office will do whatever they can to facilitate them being outside here. Ownership of this land used to be with A V D T, and then it just transferred to Buckinghamshire Council. But forty years, it hasn't been a problem in their setting up store. And for four hours, who's going to really bother? And if the council, Buckinghamshire council stops it, I'm going to come into a lot of encounter a lot of problems. Um, it is important, especially in these difficult days of trading, where every day makes a difference. And to lose two weekends plus Christmas out of your trading year does make a difference. Uh, I'll just put a plea in on behalf of some of the market traders who'd like to open up down here on the two Saturdays when the charter fair are here. And that's all. It's in your hands, really.
Um, town clerk.
Uh, this was a matter that was voted on by committee, so it has been a reason approved by committee that we wouldn't have the market uh, due to the safety reasons. That was in the process for probably three or four years now that we don't have a market on those days. It's certainly not going to be possible this year because we've looked at the paperwork, Safety Advisory Group, et cetera, has already gone through. Uh, and there was never any expectation. The traders know that they are not able to trade on the market days.
They do have difficulties in communication.
I did ask you a question about why they didn't um, on Saturday office.
They did. I have said to them, the paperwork has already gone in, the committee have made a decision, and we've got to reverse that.
In which case, we don't really, um, we've got no one on the agenda to discuss this.
No, no, that's my race in the public session. And my appeal to you with nature, they actually facilitate something to happen. I can't make it happen anymore than you can. All it needs is for someone to say, yes, that'd be all right.
The reason was taken because they were seeing the safety concerns. People were trying to load and unload and set up stores in the safer place, and we've had a couple of issues. Committee did debate the matter, um, what was put forward, and as you always know, they probably, it might have been three or four years ago. And since then, we have not had a market on transporters.
I completely respect, coming how I, what I would suggest is that we um, copy all members in the response of the decision, the reason why the decision was taken, and the background behind the decision.
I know the background behind a decision, but we're not talking about up on top of the high street, we're talking about down here. Anyway, as I said, if I'm going to discuss it now, there's a decision that can be taken by yourself and the town clerk.
Well, I would talk to the town clerk.
Yes, I think that's the way to go forward.
And I'm not.
You need to pay with me.
Council, remember. I actually have that for it.
No, I appreciate you coming back to, I've done, can I raise it in the public session?
Yeah, you will because I've been, I hadn't had them raised with me at the gym, so.
No, well, he obviously came up fairly closely, and it wasn't time to put him on the agenda. That's why I came down here.
Would the Shire Council be able to suspend, say, the parking discounts road here and have the market traders to go ahead on the Saturday?
The Shire Council has free parking at Christmas there after two days.
I'm just not going to a number of spaces. How would just that? Would they be able to do that?
I don't know. It's enough. You'll have to raise with your uh.
No, I'm just asking.
Can I leave it, John?
I asked for a age.
I'm sure you're young. But I'm sure you're young. At some point, we will discuss this. Um, and I think we need to leave it there, and we'll bring back the report, and it will be done properly. What I can't do is hang off, make a decision, and then they'll tell us.
There's no time to make decisions now.
Yeah, I know.
There comes a couple of others.
You know, it's very, very.
No time to vote for a report.
It's a town. You're um, in danger of um, over himself. Yeah, I actually heard everything he said. I heard what the town clerk said. Um, and I heard what the county said, but you know, as a long-standing town councillor, we normally don't have a debate in this section of the meeting.
I know.
Um, so I'm going to ensure that we get a report in writing.
Yep.
But I am not a legal officer, I cannot make technical decisions unless I like to.
But you know the feeling.
Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
Well, you push us up to the end, and final.
Okay, deck, apologies for our thanks, please.
This is councillor Armagh, this is the hour.
Okay, decorations to the interest. No one's got anything to present. Anyway, I asked code on the, and we've all declared our interests before it comes up in the meeting. You've got an interesting point where I can just play it at that point. At this point, the meeting, I'm going to stop talking and ask the mayor to speak. That's okay.
Thank you, um, Robin. Um, just like to say, well, two things. Um, first is have a birthday to council drain. Again, um, secondly, um, I'd like to, on behalf of Buckinghamshire Council, if I, if I may, um, congratulate the Red Roses on their triumphant um, win of the Women's Rugby World Cup. Um, there's been six weeks of outstanding rugby played, um, and I think that everybody that's watched any of it has seen what a great game the women's and girls' game is. I was very lucky to go and see a game between um, schools and sixteen girls last week at the Buckingham Secondary School. Um, women's rugby is, is an up and coming sport, um, and it's brilliant. And I'm really pleased that we had the um, England St George's flags along with a couple of um, England rugby flags out on the buildings in the town for the um, duration since the um, semi-finals. So, thank you.
We give a round of applause.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, um, mayor, for that, because I think it's only coming around once to that generation, and hopefully they'll carry on to do the same game again and again. Which has, I mean, as on item three, which is minutes of the meeting, then, then the plan, it was to question those minutes, probably agree them other during reports, um, of the minutes of the meeting, which seems to be a little while ago now, it was in July twenty third, that's the date my wife's birthday, so, um, um, well, I know the date quite well, but um, any, any questions on that?
No.
Thank you. Um, in which case, we'll move on to budgets. Um, I'm just pause for a moment, if they want members to actually have a chance to look at the budgets. I'm not going to wrap through that. If there are any questions or points people want to raise on our budgets for the year. Um, yeah.
Okay, so thank you, Chair. Uh, street markets. I remember some time ago, many years ago, we should have an agenda item on markets. Uh, and we had a better insight of what's really happening on than in the markets. So, is it possible to reinstate that? And I propose that we have Marcus as an agenda item?
That's good.
Yeah. Um, the agenda does belong to the chair, and you know, it's not appropriate for a meeting to dictate what was going to go on an agenda. However, I am going to speak to Marcus later on today anyway, um, and it is something I spoke to the chair about as well.
So, sorry, uh, Tom, although the agenda belongs to the chair, it is to the law, uh, it is in consultation with the chair according to the government, the Government Act of nineteen seventy-two schedule two.
It's consultation, therefore it's not appropriate for a committee to take to the chair or to file what goes on the agenda.
It has, it's always done with consultation, and I thought that would be the best way to go about.
We have an agenda setting meeting, but you, you came to it, you were there.
And I believe our request was made to have uh, Marcus as a item on the agenda.
And I said, there is an answer at the end of the agenda of the markets which we're going to speak on. And due to that, we could speak about um, the market rules and regulations following week, uh, following meeting. We did talk about that in the agenda setting meeting.
Yeah, we're not proposing that for the next T C N E, um, that we have markets uh, as a gender item.
Right. So you'd like a report on the markets for the next.
As, as we used to have, um, on, on the agenda before, a market was an item on the agenda.
As I have already, and we discussed in the meeting when we set the agenda, that is already going to happen anyway. Okay.
So, in which case, we're not further discussion. That agreed, as we can see, the um, you might call it a further consensus if we can cover on that. Is that agreed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think the plants said that we should do it anyway, so that's fine.
Okay, Chair, what are we just voting on then?
Perhaps a market item on the agenda.
I have a call about a market box, the next thing we just get in.
Okay, so I'm having to report for that.
On every agenda though, that's what. No, not just the next agenda. I thought it was every agenda. No?
Right.
Yeah. It is a regular item on the, on the agenda.
That's what I heard.
Um, yeah.
We can't, we can't, motions from the floor can include asking the market to lose a report.
I just.
We can't, can I finish, please, Chair? We can't um, ask something additional, but it always goes on every agenda, that can be in the report to be discussed, but we can't make that decision now because that's not on the agenda.
But we're discussing markets, it is on the agenda because we're discussing markets in budgets.
Yeah, but we can't raise a motion from the floor of the meeting to have a regular item on the agenda. That's outside of our standing orders.
But, ma'am.
Um, the clerk has um, said that it will be on the next agenda. That's um, in pub, um, in front of the public, it's been broadcast. Um, I think that that should be enough for us.
Yes, exactly.
Agreed.
Yeah, agreed, right.
I don't think we need to be voting on all these things.
That's how it happens. Which is.
In which case.
We cut our hands off.
We both.
I did. No, you didn't. I was a voter.
Um, you're not even to you, um.
I mean, you have no, my abstention on that then, please.
Sorry, Chair, can I vote? Because we don't have that motion.
No, okay. We withdraw.
Motion is not allowed when there are standing orders.
In which case we draw it, and because the clerk has said that it'll be on the next agenda, so that's okay.
Fine.
Right, okay, we'll move on quickly, then we have a matter of a little bit. Um.
I was just about to say, for clarity, my understanding was there'll be a report on the next meeting, not permanent agenda item. That was my understanding of what was discussed, and I wanted to make sure we were all in that same place.
Yeah.
On that point.
And that we're trying to discuss it.
Yeah.
Okay, and as a member who has been through his chair and mayor, I felt that they'd be right, yes, I think. Um, thank you. In which case, um, any questions on the budget, please? We reasonably intend.
Yeah, yeah. Propose we accept the voters?
Okay, if you, if you look at the outturns which we do, uh, design, and you look at where we are, I think it's really good to say that office is managing the budget really well.
Yeah.
And all quite well. And if you look at the back end of it, which is potential on tourist information, um, you'll see that we are in there. What I will say, that I was privileged to introduce the um, cabinet member, tourism in Buckinghamshire, to our office, and they complimented our staff on what a good job they were doing, and they were made out well they were doing, and they were shocked how much we did. And I think that's worth noting that that was, you know, um, our member staff voted clearly, accurately, had a good description of the words that the tourism manager sent to Bill, and I think that shows um, credit to the office and the member staff.
Yeah, definitely.
Right, each candidate will move on to these. But thanks, representing people on the outside bodies. Um, if anyone else got anything to say on that.
Oh, I don't know if this is right, but I went to the youth centre ATM with this, please. Um, I don't stand up. No, no, no. Um, yeah, just to say, um, just a brief recap of the minutes of the Buckingham Youth Centre ATM. Um, it's really positive. Um, uh, that through the good work of, am I allowed to say people's names? Yeah. Um, so through the good work of um, Terry and the financial support Buckinghamshire Council, they were able to renew the hall flooring since last year's ATM. Um, there's been really good attendance both at the Friday Club, um, and on Thursday. Um, and voluntary work done, um, during fundraising for the Christmas float collection, and the swimathon, and the Buckingham Big Day event, which includes a very successful raffle, oh, which I've got a prize for your mother in my car because she won a prize at your raffle. And they gave it to you, too, I just remembered. Only, only if you take it and not get, don't give it to her. Um, also, the, um, so building management report, um, they've had more hires than ever before, um, which has been really good. The hall's been in near constant use. Um, the report back from the treasury, uh, the treasurer as well was really positive. So, there was a lapse when Buckinghamshire Council renewed their energy contract. They didn't renew this, historically, they didn't renew the energy contract for Buckingham Youth Centre, which meant that they were landed with an extortionate leave. And when I say.
So how, how should I come do that?
Out of contract, and the bills were horrendous. However, through the hard work of the um, management committee, they've managed to get that back on track, and they have managed to completely clear the um, expenditure for the energy bills and everything. So, um, although five K reserves have been used, the actual kind of fines left over in the pot are looking really healthy, and hopefully, moving on, they'll be able to build up on that. Um, and the previous management committee, um, stood as we're elected unopposed. Um, and all in all, it was a very good meeting and very positive, and I look forward to the um, engagement over the next year.
Can I thank you for that? In the report, I obviously gave my apologies, um, as I was uh, tightly engaged that evening. Um, I hope you found it stimulating, and I hope you, you know.
And they had lovely biscuits.
They did, I know, because I eat, I eat those biscuits. Um, and it is aptly said that for new members, um, the reason the youth club is still where it is, because this council um, gave this huge amount of money when they set up the trust of it many years ago. I'm not sure whether it was who was mayor at the time, but I think we gave several tens of thousands of pounds, twenties of thousands of pounds to actually make sure they had the money to be able to set up these studies, which meant that they carry on and keep the youth centre.
I believe we also gave them a further six thousand new pounds this year, which they did, so thank us for, I should have said that the next one.
Well, that's really good, because it's, it's a good story. Um, it was going to close if this council hadn't, um, done what it did, it would have been money, and did it then, they'd raised lots of money, and they've been absolutely working hard to achieve this solvent to their credit. Um, just for my, all of you, our members to, um, go and look at several things, um, to sit the past, the community, look at the autism strategy report, and it's loads of reports coming out. It might be really important. Um, there's lots of people in our community who, um, may find your support useful. In which case, we'll move on to item six, um, update on the Bucks, Blair.
Bucks floor.
Blurt, yeah, thank you.
But explore, but Bucks floor.
Yeah, I'll send a job with these, perhaps the. Okay, if you can look at that, and then we've got a report coming forward on that, please.
So there is an appendix B.
Yeah.
That can be read when I can go through, or if I have another opportunity to read it.
It would be useful for those that.
Okay. So, um, the Bucks floor app is a resource that belongs to the town council. Um, it was originally developed using heritage, heritage lottery funding, and it includes a number of routes which enable users to explore different aspects of the town using their mobile phone. Um, the proposal is that as part of the Buckingham Place commemorations in March twenty five, um, popular guided walking tours will run, and the proposal is to create new routes on the app based on those walking tours, which will enable users to learn about this event in Buckingham's history. Um, so that's essentially what you're being asked to consider.
Lucy.
I think that sounds like a brilliant idea, and I'd like to pro- propose that we accept second my recommendation.
John, John was at first.
John, yeah.
Okay, I know that it's been paid for by W I, which is great, because obviously it would be a cost involved. One question I've got though about the app is you hear a lot about hacking and a lot about viruses and so on. It doesn't exist on either the Android or the iPhone Store. Does that mean people still want to download it onto their phones, given all the worries one has about downloading apps that might contain things that you don't want on your phone?
I can give you my limited experience. I sat in the Lord of Innovation Centre by the, as I said earlier, the cabinet member said, oh, what's this app? And the staff have to download this one to respond. So, so I think that's reasonably safe. Um, I, we let it proposed and said it, because Lisa, that we would do that. I think that if it adds another shrivel or whatever, um, my man.
Brilliant. Um, I completely understand John's um, concerns on it, that there are a lot of issues, but I think that, um, it's, is it accessed by a QR code rather than a?
It is on play.
It is on play, is it? Yeah. Is it on i- iTunes?
Android as well.
It's Google Play.
Okay.
I don't know about iTunes, sorry. I think it is.
Um, yeah.
Definitely.
I, I think that it's, um, yeah, very good idea. We should be.
It's also accessible just through a normal web browser. I just managed to open it up just on my, yeah, so you can just type in bucksfloorweb.app, and you don't have to download anything, you can just run it through a web browser.
Town clerk has correctly, or dead sound, but I think we updated it not long ago anyway, and, um, because it needs to be done, so it's a bit further addition to it. And, um, and if that, it means W I, that's I think, I think it's quite marvelous of them, really, to help. So, with that, we've got the podiums and is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. In which case, we'll move on to the next item, which is new council, and we've got a report on that. Claire.
Um, members obviously have been, or aspiring to establish or re-establish the youth council for some time. Um, and I know that council have done a few, and a couple of the staff met with various people to help come up some ideas and talk about practicalities of how that's going to happen. What everybody seems to be quite agreed on is that to do something like this, to do it properly, is quite time-consuming and requires um, an investment in both staff, town, and, and resources. So, um, I've been doing a little bit of research on it, um, and I've noticed that there have been some research actually done on youth councils and how to make them successful, and that research has come up with the list of things that are on pages eight and nine, over that pages eight and nine of the agenda. So, these are things that council or T C N E need to have a think about if they are prepared to make this commitment, um, in order for it to be a success. And I thought the start, most logical start point is it's easy enough for us to think that we know what the, would be the youth priorities. And I think the most logical start point is actually to ask a question, well, have the young people requested the youth council, do they want it? Um, and my recommendation is that we undertake a fairly scientific, neutral youth survey to see actually what it is that, that the young people of the town would like.
Hmm, John.
Do we have a budget for this survey?
We would find it within lots of time.
Okay. We have got a youth council budget as well, so we can use it from that, that we have spent for years.
Years.
We have, I mean, the, we have a, you know, that's a fair point. I couldn't pay somebody to do it. I was thinking that we would run it neutrally in-house, using some of the spare time of the community and business and getting, uh, business and community engagement stuff.
So what I pay, we got in the, this, the budget.
Two thousand.
Two thousand, I thought. Maybe I'd spend it, and we'd be rolling it over because of this interview problem, then I'll come back to Lucy while we go through this.
Um, I feel that if we have the resource and time to do the survey in-house, because obviously one of the questions on this uh, study that was done in two thousand twenty-three is will the council allocate a budget to the youth council? And as we know, if, if and this all makes complete sense to me, because if I was on a youth council and I had zero authority, zero decision-making ability, zero budget, I would think it was a massive waste of my time.
Would you have a budget?
Uh, no, this is what I'm saying. So, the fact that there's a budget already is fantastic. So, if we can do the survey in-house, let's keep that budget for if they do want a youth council to happen, and then we can give them that budget rather than rather than spending it if we have the capacity to do it in-house ourselves. Um, because I think if we can get it up and running, and we can get enough buy-in from young people.
Yeah.
And we can give them some decision-making ability and give them ownership and accountability in something that they can say that, yeah, we, we did that, we chose to spend money on that, and then that, you know, that's positive.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
Right. And I was basically going to say the same as Lucy said. Um, I think if you start paying outside agencies to run, um, these sort of, um, what's it called? Again, surveys, yeah, that's the one, thank you. Um, then, um, the budget will quick, quickly get eaten up, and there'll be nothing left for them to actually, if it does come to the, to the point of saying that, um, that yes, they do want, 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 um, there'll be no, no money left for them to do anything with anyway. So, I, I think that, yeah, the in-house option would feel better to me at this stage.
Lisa.
Thank you. I took it that we were going to take some of the budget to pay our staff in-house, not to employ someone out, but I'm happy to, um, propose that we go with the recommendation, so.
Happy to do that, probably, but just to remind members.
If we second it first.
Yeah, as, as Lisa said, if I gig, uh, just before we go about, just for members, um, when the youth council was set, it was a full council decision to have a new council. It, it was delegated to events, but it wasn't a full council decision having a new council. The mind is that this is a council, full county project, and it was agreed on that we had, the history was, that, that there was a desire for those youths to go to have a new council. It runs sometime recently successful, then, um, believed the requirements of what you'd wanted change.
I just got all my, my, my cognition is actually.
So, I think this is, the only thing I would ask amendment, that within what we've got, we include what the town clerk says, if it's important, note that we voted it, the thousand fifteen council, the new council. That's slight for many of the recommendations, telling you so that it's many that could vote for the new council, and I think that, um, if we're going to talk to the young people, and I think I can take on board Lucy's point, that if they think they're not going to be able to do anything, spend anything, and so that the officers believe that they can communicate that in the communication, and we don't need to engage anything. But I think it is right, if you're going to make a decision, you can't influence anyone when you come. Um, so, um, I, I'd just be interested in our view on that, rather than making amendments now. If that's going to be communicated in the communication with the young people, that's fine.
The, the budget chair is, is, the budget has been set by council, and the budget line is the council. So, that budget is, is set.
Set.
Yeah, so as long as we, we're happy that when we communicate to them in this communication, we explain to them. Um, although, I'll back a minute, um, I'd like to thank, um, Lisa for the amount of years that she's been trying to do this, and, and. Trying to do this and it, and, and it was taken over by another member who then left the council. And um, and it didn't progress then, so, um, so I think that. Um, it is noted and we should note that the time spent on this over the years trying to get moving. And I think this is a new opportunity. So all those in favour? She knows.
Thank you for the report, that's all.
Um. In which case, we've got a new, uh, board coming to events and that is the critical slide with John Deputy Town Clark.
Thank you. And this is just for a port to note, so. Um, as you may or may not be aware, this is some scaffolding up in the High Street. I've had a chat with W G S. Um, and there's also been. Um, another shop owner who's expressed they may not want to talk about so their property. I am gonna have a further discussion with them. However, I've spoken to W G S and they've indicated they can work around whatever interruptions there may or may not be. Whether the scaffolding is still there and the shop owner still puts the way he does. And we just need to accept that there would be a gap in the lighting, um, between. Where those areas are connected to the various electric points, so depending on where it needs to stop and start. Um, but we will carry on working with it. I have spoken to the people who issue the scaffold permits. Um, at the moment, we can't have a guarantee whether it will or will not be there when the Christmas lights are on. Because they're waiting for some bespoke bricks to be made, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I was saying to you that before, I mean, we've been looking around there, um, Brad.
Um, I'd like to thank the Deputy Town Clark for, um. Her work on this, but then fought together and, and the work in the background to. Um, discuss these things with various people and I propose that we, we accept the recommendation as a thought.
Yeah.
Somebody seconded it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we can take, we'll move on to, um. More bits this Saturday, which is a recommendation on as well, um, and that's down in, not in, are you? Don't we do that?
The new business and community engagement officer has been prepping on with business engagement. Um, Small Business Saturday is obviously gonna be quite a big event for her. So she, it was after this agenda had gone out, has had a meeting with nine or ten business owners in the town. To sound out then what they might want for the Small Business Saturday. And, and, and trying to get as many businesses properly engaged as possible. So that seems to be going well. They've come up with a number of ideas, um, I'm going to look at the not on agenda, but um. She's set up a little feasibility of them and a report with, with greater detail, we'll be coming back to the next T C N A. But, um, yeah, that's just sort of people if you know them, that these meetings are having, are happening and people are talking and. Okay, that this will be our biggest thing for the Saturday. It was only really thoughtful.
Excellent.
Any questions, John?
So the shop that doesn't want to fight so, are we working with them on the support of this Saturday?
We are not running out specific, so doing the best we can.
Um, any other comments?
Just like to thank the, um, the Business and Community Engagement Officer for their, um, work on this and, um. Being proactive with it and, um, propose that we accept their recommendations.
Um, go further on it, um, you just say that there'll be further reports coming before. It, it, um, on this later stage, is that true?
Yeah, there's another meeting between her and the Small Business Saturday.
And that'll come to this committee, um, after that was before. It's anybody, so we've got one more name before this, haven't we?
Yeah.
In which case, um, thank you for that information. Um, um, is that a proposal? Definitely, is that?
I proposed it.
Is that seconded? Lisa's seconded it. Uh, okay, well, those are the favour. Thank you. Um, this is, um, remember that somebody to receive a verbal report, who's gonna be doing the verbal?
We may, it's slightly in the wrong order.
Um, yeah. Eight point three. Verbal.
Yeah. So it is going ahead as expected. There's been meetings with the R B L. Um, Fran has also joined some of those meetings. Um, the screen's been ordered and paid for, um, it is just ongoing. There's nothing at this time that I'm particularly concerned about. Or that's been raised as a concern to me.
Thank you for that. I mean, it is reassuring that it is ongoing and that's, um, all credit to. The manager at this in the office and the conversation, um, John.
What are we up to with the single-use plastic, uh, wreath? Which we made a policy about two years ago. We said that we would be working towards a, a wreath that could be either reused each year. Or one that was made of bi- biodegradable material. Where are we up to with that?
I think that the initial order of our wreaths, official wreaths. Are coming from the, the Royal British Legion. I think we discussed it back then. And I think it'd be worth going back and checking the minutes and the minutes was that we investigated it. We'd really look at it, we investigated and I believe that what came back, actually be corrected. Was that the Royal British Legion are themselves working towards these solutions. And we are not the Royal British Legion, we are the town council. And, and as the wreaths will be ordered on behalf of people. They will be ordered through the British Legion. We can't tell the British Legion what they deal with the wreaths. We've ordered that and stop anyone. Who wants to layer a wreath of their own, um, tradition, which can be as they live. Um, but I am, if I stand corrected, every. Is ordered through the Royal British Legion. So if the Royal British Legion change their policy, the policy will change. That is a question for the Royal British Legion. That's what we investigated and we came back and discussed it. I think it was about two years ago you asked, so, um, and you asked it again now, which you've got every right to. And I respect you for asking, but I think that's what it came back, if I'm. Would, would you please go back and check those minutes and, and, and I think he's only right, he's done. Right, again, he raised in the first place that he, he has given the information what was current at the time. And, and then if it's different to what I said, we'll rediscover it. Brad.
Um. Aside from, there was plastic in them. However, those wreaths stay there throughout the year.
Mm-hmm.
So they need to have some sort of sustainable, sustainability in order to stay there throughout the year. And then the ones that were laid last year are removed by the Green Spaces team, I understand. And, um, a member of the public who is, um, somebody who is a great supporter of, um, Royal British Legion, the Poppy Peel. Takes them and he takes them apart and he makes. Decorations for his garden out of them in order to raise further funds for the British Legion. So they're not quite single-use, they are being, um, repurposed or recycled.
Hmm, nice. I like that.
That's the information which I didn't know and I'm very grateful for that.
I was just gonna say, actually, I only remember it as one of the first reports I wrote last year, which was about wreaths. And I did some investigations with the R B L and ordering them, and they are trying to make them as sustainable as possible. So it was actually this time last year because it was on.
In which case, you know it explicitly, um, was what I said opposed to accurate? Oh, that's right, looking really, you know, I was supposed to act it as an achievement, really, isn't it?
You have a good memory though.
I, I, yes, numbers that, then, yeah. Oh, thank you. We're happy to thank.
Would you allow me to read? I've, I've got a minute.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So councillor Pobby's initial motion was, in line with our environmental policy to produce plastic waste and single-use plastic where possible, this council. I'll read you the amended motion, then you read it. So, because members amended it in the meeting, this council seeks to work with the Royal British Legion in line with emerging national practice. And although she regularly lay plastic wreaths on the Royal Moro on Wednesday Sunday to explore options to use non-plastic alternatives this coming year. The town council will review what options are found by local organisations that intend to steadily seek to reduce the plastic in forthcoming years to zero. Um, and then it's this coming year, which is obviously was last year, so that's not really relevant. Um, as far as I am aware, I think we are working with the Legion and if they come up with a sustainable one, we will be put us to the point of yes.
So, thank you for that, Dan Black. That's why I do people who said I remember something correctly, so I'm very pleased about that. Um, and, um, in which case, can I thank you for the report and the report and the update and the reassurance, which is the important thing. Instead of the pride is going ahead. That's the most reassuring thing. Thank you very much, Deputy Town Park. We mean our thanks, the Deputy Town Park for all this. Work she's put into this.
Yeah.
That agree?
Agree.
Okay, thank you. Um, eight point four, champ there, the verbal report from yourself, isn't it?
Um, so everything is going as planned. I've had the meeting with Marshall. He understands the issues with regards to scaffolding and how he may need to sort of rejig slightly. He also understands the restrictions where the R B L is concerned, you've got plans in place. And everything is fine, um, everything is on track. I'll be working out stuff, who's going where and why tomorrow. Or the best is done, they're starting to go out. And what I will say, which I. The first time we've ever done it is, uh, First Down Sixth Form School helped us distribute all of the. Letters to the local business, whatever, so that was over three hundred letters, they had delivered, so it was like every minute or so.
Yeah, is that a proposal?
So, yeah.
Yeah, America seconded that. Those in favour, right now, thanks. I think that's important, a minute.
Yeah.
That's tremendous.
First time we've done that and it, it's. Um, so yes, we're where we need to be, it's a reassurance.
I think, I think it's great when I've, um, had conversations with First Down in the last, um, twelve, eighteen months, the sixth form. And they have been very, um, um. Enthusiastic about working with the town council and probably other organisations as well, um, in order to. Um, help the, um, young people with their education and become more involved.
Yes, lovely.
John.
And there was a chance of something with Fairs, it was, um, single-use lapses. John.
I think that you're probably pushing a really heavy wheelbarrow of that. Um, um, just like, I, 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 I've had connections with the Chart Affair for. Quite a number of years, there was, after my. And I can assure you that over the years, what they sell or use on the store has changed radically.
Yeah.
We had all the discussions, which was supported by the office about pros per things on the stores. What I will say is when we asked us to remove things, we weren't going to call it up, it's a declaration, I think. Marshall has moved very swiftly as a, um. And to make sure that it's done, and the office are open, which means that the fairs in keeping with what. Aspirations of, of good behaviour would be.
Hmm.
And they've always done it. And I think that. Um, to throw something in at this stage when they're going around, it would not go down to. Very, you know, and I think this maybe Robbie wouldn't, um, get much headroom. It's a very. What I know about Shulman is that at this point, they're travelling around the country and then play with the play setup. And different times, they'll come from Banbridge here, sometimes the Mott, sometimes from New, um, from Whitney. Depending on the Mott's four, and, um, so they have very little time to have a lot of discussion because this is their busiest. Time of the year where they have to, uh, they can, and what the public is willing to give them. And so, yeah, I think that this is, would be something you could personally write to the show and the skill.
I mean, I'm not being serious.
No, I, well, I need to mention that. I have to take you seriously, because you raised a question. Um, but, um, I would be respectful of taking you seriously. Um, in which case, and I thank the Deputy Town Park for the work she's done. I know the real short is around scaffolding. And all the other elements that you raised, I think it's important and that. That continuity and conversations going on, I think it, it's, um. One of those things that we, we, we've done for quite a number of years, and just for information. We inherited the chart there on the back of the market, so, um, it's on the same contract. Thank you, um. In which case, we'll move on to item eight point five, which is local, which is democracy. Who's, are you, you doing that or was Claire doing that? Because it says, um, the flag's administrator. So I'm not sure which one you want to, with your states administrator. Your states administrator being here, I was gonna move all their might at the top of the agenda, but, um, but they're not here, um. I'm not just far away.
Okay, so it's just a note report regarding local democracy event, uh, in twenty twenty five, so. As we all know, it's, it's a vibrant annual celebration. Um, it's been hosted this year by Buckingham School and it's on the twentieth of November from eleven till one. All the arrangements have been, uh, made in consultation with both of the senior schools, um. We're trying to get as much pupil participation as possible. Uh, we wanna try and get a wider range of groups and that's why it's been reshuffled from October to November. Uh, we are hoping to have approximately twenty five students from the Royal Latin School and again twenty five students from the Buckingham School. Um, with a lively question last session from the local council, these officers. And community representatives and the schools have been invited to submit questions in advance. On topics that they're particularly curious about, um, invitations will be issued, um. I'm not sure there's much more I can say.
I wonder whether, I know traditionally, I mean, traditionally we've only ever had two senior schools in the town. However, is it worth now that we do have the, uh, First Down Senior School and they have been working with us on so many projects? Whether we could, I understand if we don't have time this year, but in the future extend the invitation to them as well. Because I'm sure I, I know there would definitely be some of their pupils who would be really keen to attend.
You seconded that, John?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Um, yeah, so not, I don't think we have time to.
Oh, yeah, definitely not this year, but we'd like to see if we can.
If that's, um, seconded the proposal that in future years we'll work with First Down Store, is that agreed?
Yeah, agree.
We can't ask them to, they might not be comfortable with it.
Yeah.
But that's for their decision to say whether they're comfortable to do it. And we should, uh, I just thank you for, or just to, uh, it doesn't, as I missed it in the report. This, this event's usually chaired by one man. Um, you are, you are available.
Yep.
Which kind of, yeah, it's, it runs up into the mayor chairs and all that, but, John.
Um, I'm looking at the list of invitees, um, obviously the M P, obviously, I hope to be there as well, of course. C V P? The P C C, not political, you, do you mean the P C C?
No. Sorry, sorry, chairman, I was in there, but, uh, the name of the team comes, so they can answer questions on. Police situation, antisocial behaviour and any concerns the kids have.
Okay, all right, well, we can invite the P C C as well, because he is the political, we're talking about the local democracy week.
We did, but I'm not sure, uh, we normally do invite.
Well, would you? I think it'd be reasonable post-event, we'll discuss it in the watch and any sort of things that would come down to that. Um, we thought back to us and we can discuss all those sort of things. Which, yeah, I think at this stage, getting someone to attend an event, if, if they're not going to it, then happen. And, um, I think you're right, um, they've got the answer for the pleasing, you're absolutely right, um. They're doing a, um, promoting themselves, so why not come to Buckingham? They did actually, to be fair, they turned up to the. Town meeting, which was, which was greatly received and I think they had a really cool discussion. Men of the public, so it's not that they're neglecting us.
No.
We'll be clear about that, um, they're not, so, um. But that's, 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 um, good, so we, we, we're happy to agree the recommendation, um, and all those in favour. Thank you much, um, in which case we'll move on to calendar events.
I think I'm gonna say the same as Lucy. We've got two items of us.
Yes, I was wondering that, but I, I, I was hoping that would become obvious. But there's two off items on events. I think one is the calendar event and one is the future calendar event, which is completely different.
Okay.
This year.
Next, this year and next year. Well, this is what we're working for and next year is what we will hope we will agree. If everything goes well, we'll all be here next year, um, um, working for it, so, um, Lucy.
Um, just only being pedantic and channeling my, in the council gately, um, the. Uh, Christmas parade is spelt Christen's parade.
Um, well, I'll take, as a dyslexia, I'll take that on advisement.
Yes, I'm sorry about that, I'll fix it.
Right.
It's not the first time that I've not seen something like that.
There's also misspelling of Tuesday next to pancake races.
Okay, well, I've got my pants back, I've got my style Tuesday, um. No.
Sorry.
No, I think it's, that's exactly why you're a councillor, you're here to correct these things, that's really good, um.
I, I need to just mention that the key's. I, I need to just mention that the King's official birthday is meant to have been taken on.
Yeah.
Was the one in June. I thought I deleted it.
Is this the current list?
This is, yeah, yeah.
Is that the bad one?
Oh, it's on there.
Yeah, that's on the current list. Um, so. If you look at it, I think it's, we did agree. Uh, an awful long time ago that we were going to do a press release, which got delayed for this reason, delayed for that reason. Delayed for no reason, then put back, that I think it's probably. Start of the year, actually, or start of this council, we were going to do a press release about all the events that we actually did. It was made and agreed, I presume that on this item, to reaffirm that we will. Do that press release because it's important that the town knows what we send. Or that they know what we do. Because this is probably. If you look at other councils, the side up in town council, it's, it's a comparable list of events.
Mm hmm.
And it was nice tonight that the. Council morju who, um, actually thanked us for the money that we gave to the Christmas parade. Um, I think that's, um, good. We did give money to the Christmas parade. We also did give money to lots of other events. And those events bring in goodwill and trade. So I think. Uh, we're happy to carry on and get that press release done in a, in a. There's other things happened in the council, to be fair, which were more important because we needed to do a communication strategy. Um, but I think they probably got to a window where that can be done. Am I? Thinking out a turn in this? No? I'm getting it.
I'm apologising. I'll check.
Well, I've never.
I've been done.
I don't actually recall ever saying anything in broad text. So it was done, it was done in my absence. Um, because I don't remember going to.
It was being prepared before I went on leave. Um, the, the press release, we were about to move the events, there was dismembering. I haven't checked if it's gone out. It was my first.
If it hasn't been done, Chair, then apologies, we will get it done.
Well.
Yeah, I believed it had.
I, I haven't been asked or, or pressured to reply on it. And as I asked for it in third place, I presume I would have been asked. Um, John.
Is there a reason why Holocaust Memorial Day is happening on a Tuesday, the twenty seventh, rather than the Monday, twenty sixth?
That was this, this, well, this year's event.
No, this is, this is this year's event.
January.
Yeah. So when, when we're on next year's, you can ask questions about what day it is, but it is.
This is on appendix day. I'm looking at the right.
Yeah, sorry, John. I apologise. Yeah.
Awesome. That is twenty seventh.
Oh, is it? Oh.
So it's our right day, is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, to be fair, this was something on Thursday.
Three seven, January.
It was an ambition of, um, council and the route though, that we had did this event because originally. She was an officer of Milton Keynes Council. And they did that event there and it was her initiative that we did it in the town council. Took some years to get there, but we got there at the end, didn't we? So, and I think if you look at it, how it's grown every year, it's really good. Matt.
Um, I'm just doing a margaret now. Commonwealth is one word.
Oh, yeah.
Margaret is still in this.
Yeah, third and last.
Is there any more Margaret to be done? Can we move on to the next one?
Move on.
Uh, is that, okay, we'll move on. Right, item. Fourteen, Best Cat Village. Um. Well, we've got two. No, oh, yeah.
Presentation from Mr. West.
Yeah, oh, yeah, sorry. I just jumped down and this there must have been four years later. Um, um. Both on Mr. West, let me read the letter. Please. And then you'll, you'll see the, um, the letter was to me with fire and there. Um, to John, not the Town Clerk. So I didn't answer it. I gave a holding response so that it would be doubtful. Um. Um, um, because I can't commit anyone to anything. So, um, it's on here. Um. Frank.
Thank you. Um, so. Um, having read through. The background on two point one, um. And the recommendation, I would, um, propose. That we, um. Take, take the recommendation, um. Um, requesting further information from Mr. Weston, um. My big concern on it. Is, um, having cars going and parking in the dog walking field. Um, I don't think that that's, um. That's a, um, that's a safe, safety nightmare, isn't it really? If you're having, having people driving in and out there. I don't think that's something we can sanction in any way at all. Um, knowing how, um. How much organisation is taken when we do have events in there, getting the traders et cetera in and out. Um, safely, um, when there's people about, um. It's, it's, it's not something that's, um, that, that we can, I don't think we can, we can even contemplate that. Um, I think we do need to, um, accept the recommendation and, um, go back and ask Mr. Weston for further information.
If you have a comment on it. Um, John.
Well. A fundraising day was happened at Edmonton Way some years ago. Um, advantage of that is there's a road right next door to it. Um, my suggestion would be all about doing it at Edmonton Way rather than at Borden. Borden Meadow, because it's more appropriate. Um, there's toilets there and some which there aren't in Borden Meadow. Um, uh, obviously it's, it's sounded to the trial council could read that as it's their land. Um, but that might work better. Um, and that's not them, Borden Meadow, and it therefore wouldn't have to interrupt. We don't want it really happening on the same day. I'm sure he wouldn't want it happening on the same day, um, to celebrate Buckingham itself.
I think that's an excellent idea.
I think also we do have our own laces.
Yeah.
Which is our property. We don't actually, unfortunately, own Edmonton Way. Perhaps we should. Um, um, perhaps.
I'm thinking of the road next to it.
I know, but there is park in that place or there isn't park in Edmonton Way. And I know there's. There is park there to live in.
Well, there is parking in Lacy or two.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, um.
Yeah.
So it's really up to them. And that's a conversation afterwards.
Don't you all suggest it.
I think you're suggesting, I think.
A suggestion to.
That they add both either objections and. And, um, the thing with Lacy, there are, uh, the scout belongs to the scout department. Um.
I know, I know all of that.
By the time. The cat bet.
But at least there are.
I. With respect, um, I was just talking, thank you. Um, with Lacy, there's. There's toilets and facilities there. So I'm just suggesting that we put both in consideration. I'm not suggesting one or the other, it's our event.
Yeah.
And, 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 and we've asked for more information. Um. I do believe that.
We haven't done yet. That's the preparation.
Yeah, we're asking for more information, yeah. So I think that's all we can do in that kind of that. Thing is, we don't actually go just to the park. It may end up being an environment of a deep decision because we don't run it up. So, um, we run the events. So where we are, so is it proposed, suggested, posed by? Frank, seconded by Lucy. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
When danger of writing an event, which is ours.
Yeah.
Um, which is where we shouldn't be. Right, we're on now another calendar event. Um, is it, now can Margaret please come out?
I was going to say, it's, it's spelled beautifully.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll talk to this one, Chair. Um. Most of the dates are fairly written themselves, um, and the office have done research to make sure that we're not. Blashing the things like the World Cup and central, whether we're on Brady. The. One that is our biggest concern as an office is what we have highlighted in yellow, which is the bonfire fireworks date. So the two options are either to have it on Halloween or have it the day before remembrance. So it is very problematic for us as an office.
Yeah.
And especially the green spaces team work like to finish off bonfire fireworks, get that. Thing emptied, everything chained up and ready. We would have to remove everything from all the barriers and everything. And then the lights need to be out very early the following morning. So it's a difficult one for us to manage. However, the view and the obvious for us that there are considerable issues with holding it on Halloween as well, without the, um, my perspective. So there is a bit of a decision to be made here.
Right, in this case, I'm not sure who was first.
Frank.
That was first, um.
Um. So on bonfire and fireworks, I can completely understand. Why there's issues on, on both. Both dates. It's not, yeah, I'm like, so the fifth is Thursday then in that case, isn't it?
Hmm.
Um, so, yeah, that's, that's quite a difficult one, really. Um. I was going to say that I thought that, um, last year it was on the day before, um. The remembrance. I think it was the weekend before. It was the weekend before. Um, I, I was, I was only thinking that because, um. Of the, um, cadets couldn't do the afternoon at Tesco. With the popular hill because they had to go and help with the, with the thing. Um. I'm, I'm pretty sure it was, I think. No, no, it wasn't. It was, it was, it was the, the first weekend. Um. The one that I flagged up is the skate park event, which is down for Sunday.
Oh.
Um. There's a particular reason for that because it's always been on a Saturday before.
Yeah, can I just go to Deputy Town Clerk and I'll come to members? They do. No, I just brought you my, I say, in that case, I'll come to, I believe, at least to them, and this.
I have a vague memory of fireworks night being on Halloween one year because. I remember being on my scooter when my grandson, he was fairly young, doing trick or treating with fireworks going off in the park. So I think we have done it on that day.
Yeah.
Yeah? Yeah. Um, two, two suggestions. One, and this might be completely out of the question, what's chance of it happening on Friday? Doing it sort of the Friday before remembrance, Sunday.
So we would have to speak to, I did ask somebody to check in the title, but we haven't had the result back as to what their availability would be for a midweek. Generally, I think we, we were expected to do a weekend slot and the town are quite used to this. But I mean, that doesn't mean that we couldn't. See if they're available and, and look for a different date.
Just as a potential, and, and if not, um, because I think it will be too much, they'll be exhausted, bless them, they're trying to do it. The night before and then.
It's a very installment.
Yeah.
Yes, but actually they.
And, and, and what we don't want is for any of our team to. Get stick for doing road closures or for something going wrong when they've actually been working their behinds off all night trying to get the fireworks packed down.
Am I going to put you in the region that you think Halloween is best?
I think either Halloween or potentially as a wild card, the Friday before remembrance, Sunday.
Hmm.
Um, but again, I don't know how well that would work. I'm not overly experienced.
One, one, sorry to, Chair, for now, just one of the issues that we have. So one of the things they do is they don't actually attempt to bring all of the barriers back from. Bonfire and fireworks, they chain them up and then go back, um, a weekday and pick them up. Because it's quite a substantial thing to do and then they have to go back to the depot and they can't rush them in stolen. So they all then have to be decanted out of the depot. So quite. You might not think it, but they're quite heavy and there's.
Yeah.
Wild. But we would need to do that because we'd need the barriers then to set things up for them. So, I mean, it, it, the. Friday could be doable. It would give people a bit of a break at least, but it would lead to a very late night on Friday. But to have, I mean, it is a better option, I think, than the Saturday.
I, 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 I think the, the concern about numbers is, um. What it is, we, we had lots of people coming to it anyway. We, um, there are very few. Free events, people are cancelling them all over the place. It's a calendar issue and I think, I remember it being on Halloween before. On, I.
Might make it more fun.
And people may come dressed up in gaudy uniforms and, and, um. They make them dressed as their favourite people. Um.
We could have Goonish rather.
Goonish, Goonish, the idea of Goonish, we said. Um, I, I would. If anyone, as I said, I would propose that we go on Halloween. Um.
Yeah.
So it, it starts in wise, never else it seems to make sense. If thousands of people, we still have three thousand people there. You know? Is it, can we vote on that? So.
Yeah.
It was seconded it.
Lucy.
Lucy, okay. All those in favour? Just seems a sensible thing to do.
Yeah.
That's.
I, I would say that's a good picture.
Yeah.
You know, th- this is a Halloween.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't, whether they can have special Halloween colours for the fireworks or something like that.
Halloween guys.
I mean, I mean, there's all sorts of pumpkins in the space.
Don't you, you've been serious now. You've said you were.
Have you all worked out the difference yet?
You go back to it, bin turnips, please, and not pumpkins.
Town Clerk.
Um, just the, the mayor's question after why it's moved to a Sunday for skate park jam. I've got no idea. I think it's possibly an error. Thank you for swapping it. Can I do a bring back?
Uh, in a Margaret's artwork here. Um. You will always be with us, especially when there's a correction to be made.
I believe there was only an intention of making it to the Sunday, so I think it's an error.
No, no, it would be an error. Right, okay. Well. We've weighed on that and agreed that, that, that seems to be, um. The most prudent way to go forward and will. Obviously, we'll do all the press releases and stuff around that properly and explain it and. I think we can make it a much more fun affair if people come dressed as ghosts and things.
Hmm.
Um, it will just be even more fun, won't it?
Yeah.
And, um, it'll be dry at night as well.
Some of you that are wearing these wonderful, cheap costumes.
Well, they'll be well away from the fire anyway, so. Um, we'll talk that all out. Uh, okay, in which case, Arlington twelve, which is, um. Now, I'm just going to get into that, yeah. I was just going to say, uh, this year, this year.
So this is just the review of Fringe Week, so it's for members to note. And that members agreed to participate in Fringe Week twenty twenty six. So. If you know, there is a background, um, of a week long series of events run by B T C. And there are other people, groups and organisations involved in it. Um, so Coach Jenna did his basketball sessions. And I had a conversation with myself. It went really well. He's also agreed, um, if we wish to, to do the same again next year.
Mm hmm.
Um, yeah, it was a physical group. I think there were some members here who attended.
Yeah.
Um, so they, they, uh, went very well. Um, crafts at the Chancery Chackle was done by National, uh, dressers from stone. They sent out some arts and crafts and some staff. And it was well received. Art in the market, um, we couldn't have got any more seats in it, we thought. So it better be possible this year. Um. The street food fair, Fran and I and Lisa were there. Again, very, uh, it was a good collaboration with Fight Club. Um, there's something I want to know about. It was well attended. It was, it was a really gentle vibe and everyone enjoyed it. And people who tended to turn up tended to stay for the whole day. They didn't just rock up, they sort of plonked themselves down and they were there for the afternoon. It was lovely. Um, you saw lots of families intermingling and different family groups and children playing together. It was lovely. Uh, a family fun day up at Lowes Hill. Again, we had the usual absorbs and the D J. Loads of free activities. The beat the keeper was particularly popular this year. I watched the queues there, they did quite well. Um, and Buckingham Play Day. So I've spoken to Mount Keighley's Player Association. Um, it went very well. And again, they're happy to work with us again in the future for Buckingham Play Days if we choose to.
Yeah.
Um, the slight flying ointment was the comedy night, which was then. Um, moved to a school disco and sadly, there just was not the uptake for it. So the event, we, we ran it to the last second to see if we could get. We did everything we could on different ways of advertising it.
Yeah.
Um, but we just couldn't get the tickets sold, so we sadly had to cancel it last minute.
Hmm.
We didn't get, uh, make it work on.
Yeah.
It just, um, I have to say that we spoke about it, we tried it, laughing, it never came in. And it just would have been so sad. Um, but, um. Think on the comedy night thing, we did, we'll have to review where we do that in the, by the year. Um, Frank.
Um, I think the, the family fun day, um, although there was lots put on there, um. There was, um. It wasn't as well attended as it might have been. Um.
There was a football match, wasn't there?
There was, there was, and I think it was the day after we'd done the street food fair. Um, it wasn't that warmer day. Um, and. Yeah, um, I think the food stalls that we had. Were a bit disappointed with the takings on that day. So I think that's possibly something we need to look at. Again, whether we are, um. Expecting people to go and spend money on things like that rather than, um, going along for. To go and spend money on things like that rather than, um, going along for.
I think a picnic.
Um, a picnic and, and having, having a, um, activities to do. Um, in a fun afternoon, um, that, that is something I think that, because we do need to make sure that we, the, the. Um, traders that we work with are actually getting benefit out of it. There's no, there's no point. There will stop coming if, if, um, if we don't, um, provide them with the revenue that they'll need in order for them to run their businesses. So I think that is something, it was, it was, it was good, um, but it could have been better.
Um, just to say it was cold and it wasn't made to go international on the same day. John, did you put your hand up?
Yeah, we agreed some, some years ago that we'd have a theme to the fringe. But I think for me, having a theme gives people in the town, businesses and other community groups as well. Um, some to hand something off.
Yeah.
I'm not sure this year had a theme. And I'd like to propose again that we, that we do have a theme for next year. And we broadcast that well in advance and therefore people feel encouraged to sort of maybe think, oh, I've got the theme of X, whatever X might be. And therefore be inspired. If it's just the fringe, for me, that it doesn't work as well. Because I think, um, you know, when, when we did have themes, it encouraged us to kind of say, oh, this is me, I can take part in. Whereas sometimes when we, we, when it happens is that we're doing it for the town, while the town doing it with us. For everybody, as it were. Because for me, that's the ideal of the fringe, is it's a communal activity. That various people want to take part in. Could be the scouts, could be local business, the butchers or whatever. Everybody wants to kind of do their bit. To create like a fringe experience in, you know, in, in, in the whole town. And I think that starts with having. A clear and hookable, as it were, theme.
Um, any other members comment on that? Um, I do have a theme, okay?
I think it's good as long as it's a workable thing that, that people can love.
I'm gonna sign it now.
It's our proposal that we have a theme.
Well, yeah, it is. I mean, yeah, I suppose if we have a theme and Fringe Working Group agree what that theme should be.
That's exactly it. They write all those in favour of the thing this year. This is it, it's minute, and then we can work from that. Um, how should, we'll set up a group of the better, um. Yeah, I think I did record some some in the past. I think it may be, um, as nothing, so I think it, it, it could add something tremendous to it. We picked the right thing, um. I'd just like to say, um, thank you for everyone who contributed, particularly, um. Officers and particularly, um, councillors who, um, attended all the events and did all the stuff at the events, it is noted. Um, that that's important. It is important that they attend the events because they can come back and comment on the reports. Um, which is important that you can come back and say some, I think, I just have to say that, um. On the food, um, detail, Friday, um, I didn't get into that again because I would. Come on, we need a family dinner. Um, I didn't get to that, so my, my point is that, but I was so pleased to hear how well it went. Those who attended and, um, and I'd already bought the food, so, um. And I didn't think I could quite afford the, the amount of people I was feeding at the event, so I couldn't. Afforded it. But I, I think, I mean, um, many are thanked, Grant, for the initiative doing that. But I think it was a great initiative and by all accounts it was a marvellous success.
Definitely.
Agreed.
Yeah.
And I was gonna say, um, thank you to the Deputy Town Clerk for taking it on and, and, um. Getting it over the line to, um, Bike Club who, um, were, were our partners on it. Um, and also to, um, Sam who was, um, who did a lot of the groundwork initially. Um, before, um, she went off to Pastures New, um, um, yeah. It went, it was, um, it was a very good, very good event and, um. In terms of the food, um, it did take me nearly forty five minutes to eat the food that I bought because it was so big. So it's certainly value for money then. No, 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 it's just huge.
Um, are we happy to note that? Recommendation, actually. Um, just to say it was possible. We, we, we should have been to move it first, isn't it? So. Um, I did the story, I missed that, um, because when I heard how well it went, it was tremendous.
It was lovely.
Um, right, we can move on to, um, twelve point three, Ban Jam Review Deputy Town Clerk.
The skate park.
Sorry, skate park, that's twelve point two.
The recommendation is that we, our members agreed to book Team Rubicon for twenty twenty six, so are you sure we get? Um, in, in, in the event covered. So this is the pre-state park event that took place on Saturday the sixteenth of August. It runs from eleven till three, although it was nearer four o'clock by the time everything cleared. Um, it's aged eighty-one, age eighteen upwards, skateboarders, B and X riders and scooter enthusiasts. Um, I have to say, Team Rubicon were probably one of the easiest companies I've had to work alongside. They turned up, they had everything immediately. They set themselves up and they, they made the event very easy from our point of view. And because they work with a lot of other councils, they know what our requirements and our paperwork is, they get it in on time. He was very good. Um, there was a number of children at the end of the evening that were coming and thanking. BTC staff and councillors shaking their hands and thanking all the members. Um, there was approximately two hundred children and adults. It was hard to count because there was a lot of movement. But I think there was over two hundred and there was a lot of people who just walked in by choice to sit and watch this out on the bank or the, or the, the benches that were there. And all the foot, the ramps were utilised safely. There was one very small incident where a child winded himself on his own scooter. Um, which error I dealt with and his dad came and everything was fine. There was no injury, just he took the wind out of himself with the handlebars. Um, no bruises, no injury, just took the wind out of himself. Um, and as I said, it, it's, um, about whether we'd be happy to book them again for next year. They brought with them. Um, a number of competitive riders and what was nice is they were a similar age to the people that were there. So, uh, and they also made a point of bringing a female, um, competitive rider to help, you know, the, the. The, the female interest as well, which was nice. Um, the other thing I'll say is they were incredibly helpful, you know, there were some. Uh, youngsters there were made there, I don't have a technical term for it, like the little arm, the, the rubber, the hand things. One, one robe and they had a spare one in the van and they were just really nice people to work alongside. Um, so it's about, are we happy to use them again?
And I just wonder whether we should, um, ask all of the companies for a quote for next year. We do have time for it, um, because how easy they are to work with, that isn't, that's how they, like the other companies have been as well. Um, good you don't know. Um, so, yeah, I, I know there's time. To go out for, for other quotes to see, like King Rams, we've used, we used them for a couple of years. Um, and also to see with the money if they, what they're gonna bring as, um, riders. Because last year there was semi-pro, um, a couple of chaps there and what did he win?
He be, he became, um, world, um, world champion, um, about two months later.
Yeah, yeah, on his, on his scooter. Um, but it was funny that there was. We'd, we'd asked the kids, like, what do you want next year? And they said to, um, like, to off basically all the scooter riders. They found them, um, annoying. So, um, we, we had a laugh about that, but it was a very good event and, um, I'd like to thank. Uh, Zoe for her hard work, um, because she'd never done that before. So if we can minute our thanks, I'd appreciate that.
Can I just add, we also minute our thanks to the three councillors over there, the mayor, councillor Donaghy and John Harvey.
Thank you, yeah, exactly. I, I popped down while it was being set and I had a family commitment, I had to go to. Don't offer, I came down to make sure it was, um, okay and I couldn't really get out of it, so. Um, I promised to do something, which was a mistake.
Well, Fran supported the, the, the whole day and John was there for massive part of it.
I, I think it's valuable, that's what I said, because she had been with the event since the onset. Um, just through, um. What did we pay for the skate park?
The Hoover Con, one thousand and six.
What did we pay Buckinghamshire Council?
Hundred and twenty-four.
I see that. I just think for the minutes, um, would it be worth, um, because, um. Did you notice they used our park? Um, we didn't charge them. Nine people. Um, would it be worth when we send it to, to remind them that they used our park three? And, um, and perhaps we could do some sort of reciprocal kindness, uh.
I, I would like to propose that we, we send them a counter in, invoice, um, for hundred and twenty-four pounds for use of, um, Shantos Park. Um, for, um, um, Mrs. What's it of Wales, whatever, I've already was now, which are very, very enjoyable.
I'm just being, I'm just finding. The ridic, the ridiculous thing is, it was, I think, if it wasn't for the fact that Lucy, Lisa. John and myself were present when the kids were down there all those years ago. And when they asked the skate park to be put in, and it took us a reasonable lifetime to get it.
Years before that, me and Amanda went down there, about the same time we joined the council and we asked, yeah.
And we, and they asked us all those years ago, was can we have a new skate park please? Because this is rubbish. And then when we finally get it, we have an opening of the skate park, which consisted of a photograph of the capital, then it took itself silently in the middle. Um, and, um, even though, um, it was quite funny, we went down to this Buckinghamshire Council's opening it. And, and, and it was quite funny, Fran came to look after me and, and it, and it was photographed.
They didn't put it on Facebook.
We were sort of feeling that a bit cheap, I think, at the time because it was really our pressure that got it there, um. And I, and yes, effectively the officers done a great job facilitating it for Buckingham Council, but we did wait a very, very long time. It's one of the bit. Charged or challenged by the, now paying a hundred and twenty-four pounds and use that in. We, we all asked to, and it was funded from sector one O six money, which actually was taken from the developments in Buckingham. Not from Alsbury, not from Wickham, Chetcham or Amisham. It was funded by sector one O six money. Um, which the town took from their developments and the charity council has been using a facility which they've been begging to use indirectly since. So I don't have a position, I didn't round to either. Sorry, I just don't like.
Um, I was gonna suggest that we move on, really, because, um, I, yeah, how much we rant about it. We're not going to solve these situations.
Yeah, we need to make a decision about whether we're going to simply hire Team Rubicon or put it out of the tent.
Um, whi- which case?
What's it seconded, though?
It wasn't seconded. Liz, Liz can go out for, for, um, to look at other people because we've got time. What's that seconded? Okay, so get it, all those in favour of, of looking around then? Okay.
Got time.
That's the majority. Against? Okay. No, thank you for that, um. At least, I like the way that we've got all those photographs of the bats and children, which fits in with our safety goals as well. Yeah, it is always important. Right, we move on to Ban Jam again, and it's Despity Town Park again.
Um, so it's to note with the board, we've just considered researching an alternative venue for Ban Jam in twenty twenty six. So actually, we'll run Ban Jam to the, uh, the town on Sunday the twenty fourth from nine till ten. And it was the first time we've, um, arranged it all on our own, really, with no collaboration. And it's held in Market Square and it does complete a road closure theory and iron parent costs involved as well. Um, in advance of the event, we followed our usual procedures for the safety advisory group and local businesses and residents about road closures and parking requirements. All the pubs are informed about the neighbourless policy. Local shops were, who's still alcohol, see, tanned as a little letters request. They make, remove bottles from their shelves to help try and enforce this policy. And we worked hard to try and enforce it effectively throughout the event, although it, it is tricky, it must be said. Um, it was opened by, um, Patrick Laws, the town clerk, and I'm there, councillor Fan Davies. And it was well attended, uh, the weather was lovely as well. Um, the back holiday weekend festivities drew, uh. Lots of different crowds, the local car residents, so, as you can see, regulars as well. Um, I also know that there was a large group of people who travelled some distance to listen to a particular band because it had been quite well advertised. So they knew they were there and they, they pitched up just to watch that band and it was a band that was on early in the stage for the whole event. It ran smoothly, um, thanks to our security team, although the popularity of the event means that we need to. Look at how we continue to operate this safely for everybody. There was one first aid incident which was dealt with by, well, it was myself and the ALR first aiders. Um, it was not, there, there was nothing I think we could have done to mitigate that at the time. In addition, there was an incident where a member of staff received a minor injury caused by intoxicated member of, uh, member of the public, uh, that was me also. Um, the Martin's Law paperwork was done for managing crowds in small areas and all of that paperwork was also sent off. It has to be noted that you have to consider too much alcohol, children playing, um. The event running around near to the adjacent road and kicking footballs about, the uneven ground, glass breakages. That I was cleaning up glass parts a lot, um, curves and trip hazards, lack of seating and no public toilet access are all issues that we have with this event. Um, the years line up, the list of bands are there, but Noah's Kate Blackwagon, The Bellas, The Dilemma. The Recollection, Chasing Tides, Pick and Mix, The Jurors, and the headline act was Razors and the Compaor Cash Tricks and Vanessa Horton. From Stoney Shafer Community Radio. And for, it was a more eclectic mix, I think, this year than we may have had in previous years. Um, and generally it was well received. Um, the stage sounds and lighting were provided by Square in the Air. Feedback with regards to the sound and the stage they provided has been excellent from both the professionals on the set. For listening to it and they have been provisionally booked for next year's event because I know how quickly they get booked up. Um, the budget for the event was five two, five three. We knew that it was gonna go over because of the last minute changes in circumstances and the increased, um. The increased cost of the stage and lighting, um, and that has been monitored throughout, through T C and E. So the actual spend wasn't a surprise in the end. Um, the food vendor go Greek was there and we, for the first year, decided to have one food vendor. Because previous years, there'd been issues that, because people going at Mill Deals and various things in the high street and of course desperate dancers also there. Um, and that seemed to work quite well. And obviously Mark's Isis made a ten percent donation to the national charities. And also the Mayor Round of Raffle, which was well received. Uh, so the main environmental impact is the use of generators and the electric feeder pillars were also used as much as possible to try and reduce that. Um. So, oh, absolutely, the recycling was done and fully utilised as much as possible. So the venue for Ban Jam remains the same. Are the options, acknowledging that all, not, not all this will be managed effectively. Or we consider putting Ban Jam out of the town centre to allow them to save them in.
So, I, sorry, I did have my hand up earlier.
And I was next.
Yeah, um, I went to the first ever Ban Jam and it was a pivotal moment for me. And I've been to most of the subsequent Ban Jams and. I recognise that it is a headache to organise and carry out safely in the town centre. However, I think it's really important that we keep it in the town centre, um. And acknowledge that, you know, we do the best we can. I mean, I don't, from my memory, I don't think we've ever had a significant incident there. Um. I think if we move it, we risk losing. The heart of it to a certain extent because it is, it's, it's special because everyone's getting together in the town centre. And it's like this weird kind of, it's the, the novelty of it for a lot of people that everyone's in the town centre drinking and there's music. And there's kids playing around, running around. And I think that we do, as a council, we manage it really well and. It's stressful and I know that I don't bear any of that stress. It's stressful and I know that I don't bear any of that stress because I just go there and dance, but. I think if we can keep it there, we should, because if we move it, we risk. It potentially not being as well attended, um. And it may fizzle out and I would really hate to see an event like that kind of f- fizzle out. Um, so yeah, that's my view. I would say I'd propose that we go for six point one options right.
First thing I thought when I got there, um, on, um, the twenty fourth of August. Was, oh my goodness, that stage and the curb, there isn't much space there. Somebody's, somebody tripping over is going to seriously hurt themselves because they, they're, they're. They're not forgiving those, um, those curb stones around, um, round there. It's a tight space, um. It's uneven ground, it's. A road closure. It's difficult to actually police who's coming in and out. Um, it's difficult to police where people are going to the loo, whether they're going to, um. The pubs when they're not spending any money in those pubs. I know that a lot of people do spend money in the pubs, but some of the pubs, um, um, people, some people are taking around alcohol there and, and, and not, um. Not spending, but just going and using the facilities. People, um, using, um, the couple of alleyways that are off. Um, the market square, um, to relieve themselves, um. There are, there, there are hu- huge number of issues, um, yes, I think we've been, been lucky with it. Um, I don't think it started off where it is now, I think it is.
Did it? Yeah, I remember it, I.
Was it not at some point down, down outside the old jail?
No.
No, I started here.
No?
Never.
But something else then, that's some, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not arguing with anybody about it. I'm not, I was asking a question. Somebody had said to me that there was something where there was a flatbed truck, truck.
Uh, yeah, they used to do it on a flatbed truck, but it was always in the square.
I, I thought it was down at this end by the old jail. That doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, um. I think we need to look at somewhere else, myself. Um, I understand councillor Draper's, um. Um. Wish, desire for it not to lose its heart. People said that that would happen when, um, Music in the Market was moved. Um, and became Buckingham Live. I think Buckingham Live for the last two years has been massively successful.
Hmm.
Um. I think we need to look, explore other options because I was clearing up broken glass as well and sweeping up this, getting rid of the cigarette ends. And the, and the bottle caps and all those sorts of things from the tarmac along there. At half past ten, eleven, twelve o'clock at night is absolute nightmare. It's a lot easier on grass to do that.
Lisa.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted a minute to, um, to thank Zoe, I don't want to turn far up, who researched the bands. And although I wasn't present at the event, I wasn't doing very well, I, I just think it's important to, um, thank Zoe for her deep diligence and, uh, hubbub.
Um.
Yeah, um, I want to recognise that the hard work that went into organising the event, which was superb, in my opinion, anyway. Um, but I do think it's important that we have events such as the band jam that can bring together a wide range of people into the centre of the town. And I just wondered, um, I noticed there's no costume yet for the, for the road closure, but would it be terribly more expensive to actually. Close off the town centre for an event like that? So there's a, a flat area kind of outside Brown's to put the.
They haven't, she's got the invoice to me, which is why they announced our best, I can't give that number.
Right, I just, um, I, I think myself, of course, um, um. The original event started because there was a desire to do different types of music back. The original venue, we did an experiment in the, in the, um, one afternoon in the. Um, we brought a lorry and parked it in the, well, I brought a lorry and parked it in the, by the old jail. And, um, but three bands and, or four bands. And it went down so well that the then town clerk, Paula Heath, um, said, well, we're going to do this properly. And we're going to do a proper event up in the town centre. Because we already did music in the market in the town centre, so there was already an action plan. And there was already a plan of action which was drawn together at the time to do it. Now, I've attended every band jam and I've spread up the road after every band jam. And I see no difference. Um, apart from the popularity, that might be due to the choice of the bands that attracted the popularity to it, which is credit to them and the worst, you know. I share the concerns, um, we've already taken one musical event out of the town centre. Um, I'd have to, real, um. Concerns to change that personally. It was a big fight to get the budget in the first place to do a second event. No, no one will come. That was what it is. No one's interested. No one would turn out and it's been successful. Yes, there are TV issues with every event we do. The reason the high street is in, um, a flat state and unlevelled is because of the, um, state of the route. Which is Buckinghamshire Council, um, and, and so the. Simple fact that the suggestions, I, I emotionally are attached to it being where it is and, um, nothing of our right to be so. Though I would second Lucy's position. Um, in that case, because, um, I have the same emotional attachment to it, uh, the site, the venue and where it is. And I think that is something that needs to be explored, um, and I'm second that. Pose a, as you go up to win two, and I also, if, if it's an alternative, John. Um, we cut speed and then we'll go to the vote and then we'll see where it takes us.
I am, I have to say, I'm, I'm, I'm. Because of the decision to take Music in the Market and turn it into Buckingham Live and relocate that. I think at the moment, given the circumstances, it's politically untended. Actually move this one out of the town centre too. I think the resistance and uproar from people will be significant. But I think there are things that we can experiment with. We managed to get a message across, don't bring sparklers to the fireworks. I think we need to get a message across, don't bring glass. Bring cans if you want, but don't bring glass. If you want to have a drink, drink from the pubs. If you want to bring your own drinks, bring cans or boxes. Don't bring glass. I think we need to take that very clear because we're thinking of children and safety and. All the other things that can go with broken glass, um, as well. I also think, and I thought this for a long time, I don't get why we have a stage where we have it next to, you know, next to Urban Spec Savers. I don't know why the stage isn't at the bottom of the hill and use the natural, you know, incline of the hill as being the, the, the place to, to look at. Look down on people. So it's like a, like an auditorium, as it were. That for me would make much more sense than having it on the side where everything is on the wrong side. You can't even record a stand there without them as a typical. I'm not saying that's a solution, but I think there are things that we can do to mitigate some of the problems with the, um. With the area, um, and the, and the location, but I don't think I can support your friend in terms of finding another venue. I don't, I don't, I don't agree, so.
I'm not tackling.
The rapid pointer would clarify, the cost of closing the bottom, the bottom load would be substantial. It's not the cost of the road closure, it's the cost of that, closure would have to be fully staffed and loaded around. So to do that on a Sunday, we would probably need to get, I mean, that's. Well, the bit that we close is fairly straightforward to manage, but, um, yeah, to divert practical around the town, we would maybe call higher rates on this. We would have to have quite a lot of staff.
So there's a chart fair.
That would have to be on from, yeah, from six o'clock in the morning. The chart affair becomes its own barrier.
Hmm, yeah.
So it's much easier there, and it orders this would need to be manned from probably seven AM till midnight.
Yeah, and that would involve. Involve the Reston Avenue and the road load, you know, the massive, where we are.
Good idea, so.
Um, is there anything?
Sorry, well, um, onto the councillor, Harvey, you're talking about having it, uh. Um, running along the bottom.
Yeah.
There's not actually, if you do that, the space very much, you need to have room behind it for generators and all, all the other things. There won't be a lot of actually room for the crowd by that point.
Surely it's the same wherever we put it.
Well, that was where it is, it put, it faces forward, there's actually a lot more space because you can get all the way down to the bottom. So if you had it tilted the other way, no. There's a measure of misunderstanding what you're saying.
If, 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 if. If that's the case, having it here or here, mathematically, there's no difference. You're still taking up the same amount of area.
No, because you, you lose the space that's down the side of the stage. Because the stage comes forwards quite a bit, so you end up with an L shaped. Space for the crowd and you'll lose that bit.
It's my opinion. But I think it was, definitely town council, I've got something else to add.
I believe there was an issue with the tree that limited where we could put the stage. So there's a tree that's kind of in that flat standing and it.
Bigger and bigger.
And, and there was an issue with the tree because that isn't where the stage was originally meant to be and it was a decision made. On the day because of the obstruction that the tree would cause.
Yeah, right.
Sorry, I didn't need to cut through.
No, 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 just, just.
One thing, always like to think differently. Um, we have a road closure on the entire area. The points have been made about the unlevelness of the curb and the points have been made about that, I heard them. We have the whole road shut for the road closure order. Um. We also could put the stage to be completely different places. Completely, um, if the width were, how the stage could go down by the King's Head. And you've got a long, flat area with no curbs, nothing standing there. You've got nothing, um, about that, no slope, and there's also the same electrical points at the King's Head. We, um, and because we put them all in, uh, many years ago, there's electrical points down there. Um, there's the same point, the cabling of it can be done the same. Um, you can run the cable outside the event and you can run it around the outside of the, um. Where the, um, stonework is, the old jail, there's also an electric point in there, there's also a meter down by the. Um, which we put in there purposely to run in events, um, down there. So there is that option. And I haven't measured it and I don't know the width of it, but I'm just thinking logically, if you're concerned about slopes, then you're on a flat area and you're still in the town centre. Town clerk.
We need to be careful, we need to keep a blue route for emergency services access, has to run through the middle of it. So if we were to put a stage outside the Kings, we would block that access.
Hmm.
That's considered the clue, we're going to do it there, haven't we?
Yeah, we're saving the smart way. No.
We can't, we can't. This place, um, you say, but that, that side, um, thank you for that, and we'll move to the vote.
The area in front of the old jail, would that be big enough to put a stage on?
But you've got steps.
You have got steps.
Lots of steps leading down to the main road.
Yeah, but you have the back of the stage there.
Oh, pointing towards the shops.
The shops, oh.
Yeah.
Well, that's not, I mean, we, we, I have got my management of the stage.
But you've only got a small area then, it actually in front of the stage, haven't you?
Yeah, and you've got.
Whereas where is with it?
Those, yeah.
They haven't chosen the set down, but technically down.
Yeah, that's what it is.
But, because I think we're going around, um, doing what happens, um, and if that's bad, then we go to the next thing.
Well, I don't want to labour the point, but I just want to be clear that one of the reasons why I, I've asked for it to be considered. Is the new Martin's Law stuff that's coming, which is about manag- managing anti-terrorism and all of that stuff. You know, we have seen about where would cars going through crowds. I won't say anymore, you know where I'm going with that. Um, and that's now something that this is the first year we've had to consider that as far as our recent assessments. And it has added a massive layer to managing events in these sorts of areas that we haven't had to consider before.
I, I absolutely understand what you're saying. I also know that in my limited time since I've been doing events in Buckingham. Every year we've ever tried to do anything, something on the outside has always tried to find a reason to make it more difficult. And that has been a constant intrigue and it all comes from other people. If it isn't, um, from London, it's from the local authority. And you're, I, I recognise what you're saying, definitely, but can I propose that we move to the vote? Um, and then see where that takes us and if that boat falls, then we move to the next boat. That's the main thing, very well. Are all those in favour of Lucy's proposal? All those against? Abstentions? Thank you. Right, I think that that was actually really worthwhile because it gave officers charts to express their views. We gave, um, big whatever, of the vision, I think it was a word of our conversation. Then thank you for that, in which case, we'll move on to something which would probably be less contentious.
Hmm.
I don't know, um, twelve point four, dog show.
I'll make this one as quickly as I can, it's an easy one. So, um, it's for members to know the report. Uh, the dog show took place, it's expected on the sixth of September. Again, the weather was frankly, although it was stormy gusty at times. And it was opened by the mayor and we estimated there was approximately a hundred and twenty furry contestants. Um, the day was a success. I, I estimated a crowd of around two hundred and fifty residents. And the feedback from attendees was positive throughout the day. Um, the registration process kind of gets a bit chaotic and it's very busy to begin with and then sort of calms down, settles. The arena, uh, looked great, um, and thank you to Mag Farm for the hay bales that they provided. Uh, Kimberly Cox and Sophie Beacon, um, the dog trainer, Anne Wilson Washes, judged as they did previously. And the event was prepared by councillor Tryne, who kept the crowd informed. Um, all participants received certificates of participation. And I have to say, thanks to the sponsors and all of the organisations, of which there were many. Um, we had an, an absolutely overwhelming amount of goodie bags and freebie gifts. There wasn't a dog that didn't leave with something, whether they didn't even intend a glass. There were, you know, there was attending gifts given, they were submitted to turn up. Um, and I, I believe the quality of the gifts were very good and very high. Um, there were eight categories, um, and the overall winner was won by Mabel. You can see the list of glasses and sponsors going through. Um, the gifts were very generous. Um, there was also a colouring competition and there were ten craft bags put together by Paula and they were well received. Pretty much all the children managed, who, who took it seriously and put in their own, he's received a gift. We had four food stalls, um, I'll mention, I mentioned specifically Spanish treats in Gisdi. Da Italia because they are ones we've not used before and they were received. The others were also very good. I'm not saying they weren't, I'm just saying we had, we tried them, we really.
Hmm.
Um, there were also nine dog themed trade stores, which is more than we've done in previous year. So I made the setup kind of like a couple park in half and it, it created quite a nice little buzz.
Yeah.
Um, the, the feedback from Kimberly Cox was very positive and I've already spoken to her because her. Contract has ended and she wants to renew her contract to stay involved with it and I'm going to be having a chat with her. In the future about that, um, it hasn't been a priority right now. From a budgetary point of view, we did okay, we did well, we came in under budget and we managed to get an overwhelming amount of sponsorship. Um, and Mark's Isis again, um, donated ten percent takings to the most charity in the amount of forty pounds. Um, I'm wish for this really, I don't think so, really.
Yeah.
A good, good event. Thank you, um. Lisa.
Thank you. Um, again, can I minute my thanks to Zoe, please, and, um, all of our, our, other staff that worked today? And also can I minute my thanks to John for helping at the registration table and, um, to ex-councillor Terry. Um, who's always on hand, so if those could be minute, I'd appreciate it, please.
I also think we should maybe our thanks Martin.
Um, thank you so much, Martin.
Um.
Yeah, what a bunch.
Martin was probably entertaining. Um, and I think his doubles had turned throughout the day.
Brilliant.
It was lighthearted, procreate, and I think people really took to it. I think he did a really good job.
Yeah.
Um, and I think, I hope you enjoyed it, I don't know whether Martin enjoyed it, Martin enjoyed it. Martin, Martin enjoyed it. Um, I mean, our thanks to him because it was, he was good. And, uh, with the fact that we'll move on to. And, uh, with the fact it will move on to twelve point five, uh, art unveiling, which I think. Um, she would go to the, the clock again.
So again, it's just to note the report, I think there was quite a few of you here that attended, so. There was a piece of commissioned artwork, which is literally on the wall on the other side here, um. There was a committee put together, the drawings were agreed, and, and that's the final result, and it's come from, um, this town centre generation. And there were two parts to the event, there was the unveiling, and then there was, uh. Uh, an arts in the market in the cattle pens afterwards, which had a variety of different things there, and there was also a selfie competition. For anyone who wished to enter, which was taking a selfie in front of the interactive piece of artwork that we've got. It was took place on the twenty seventh of August, it started at twelve. And had the, um, art in the market continued, it finished at four, however, we closed early because the weather was not kind to us. Um, so we, uh, we aborted that event and ended it slightly early. The town choir opened the event, um, Mayor councillor Davis, um. Then to speech, and the unveiling lasted approximately fifteen minutes, and people stayed on afterwards. Um, since the installation, there have been a number of positive comments regarding the artwork. And I, I've received them myself, and people are commenting on it, saying that it suits and reflects well. Um, so there's been a real positive feedback to that, and, and again, I'm not sure there's much more.
Yeah, I just, oh, um, that, um, it's, you know, about it, I don't know how to, what you thought about the whole thing.
I think it's amazing, I really love it, um, there has been a bit grumbling. Um, as always happens when, um, we don't fill potholes with, um. Which are out of our, out of our remit anyway, um. However, no, I think, I think it's, I think it's lovely, I just, I, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll chuff a spits with it.
Thank you, Fran, John.
Um, first, I think probably all should be filled with artwork, really. Secondly, I know that everyone agrees with this, but I think the photograph in the report demonstrates my point. The welcome to Buckingham image doesn't stand out well enough, in my view. It's against the, the, the various solid, solid brick behinds. It's not as black as some other bits of the same sculpture. And I think it should be made blacker, so it, it's more easy to see against the brickwork, that's my view. I appreciate not everyone agrees with that, but I think it would look a lot better if the world developed and like more easily.
And I hear what you say, I did talk to the artist as he was doing it, and he was installing it, it went down the day before. I also had photographs here for it was unveiled, and I asked him the question, why did it? And it was an artistic choice to do it like that, and I should imagine if we walked into the moment and. Went up to it and put a moustache on it, we could, we felt it should have a moustache on it. Um, art is the expression of the artist. It's not then to be altered by other people, and, and it's not, it's an artwork, it's not a sign. It is an artwork, and he, and he did it in gold, that is a gold bronze touch on it, is what he wanted to do. And he put that on because he wanted different light to hit it, to capture the actual letters in a different light. Now, I, I asked him the same question, um, because I dabbled myself in those things, and that's what he said. I, I hear what you say, John, but it's rather like if you're going to, my view is you go into an art gallery, there's things you like and things you don't. But you don't then go up to the, and ask them to alter it, do you? Um, Lisa.
Um, I actually thought the same thing when it was unveiled, uh, funnily enough, um. I take your point on board, that you don't go altering somebody else's artwork, I don't think that's what John was suggesting. Um, that we wouldn't al- alter it, it was more about making it stand out more. Again, it's the brickwork, some of the lettering kind of like is, it isn't a standouty. Um, but taking your point on board, yeah, um, but yeah, I, I thought the same thing when it's unveiled.
I did ask, because I. And I, I wanted to know, um, any other points, I mean, and just can we minute our thanks to everyone involved?
Yeah.
Um, particularly, um, Brant and John for meeting and.
And the artist.
The idea, um, I think that it was a great idea, and it worked out brilliantly, and the thing is, he's most made an even. The other day I walked down, there's people still standing by it, and both of them are on their cell by it.
Yeah.
Um, we need to thank Sam again on this one, because, um, Sam was, um, um, the officer that, um. That did the initial contact with Lee Vernon, um, to, um, to. Start the ball rolling on it.
No, no, that, that's one, but I think this is one where we've had a way of success. I'm disappointed that the cabinet member, member didn't come to it, but the cabinet member for the environment and, um, climate change. He had been by it, and he stood by it, and had his photograph stood by it.
Okay.
Um, when he was in the town with me the other day, um, I took him to show me personally, um, and he thought it was wonderful. Um, right, I, I took thirty action this, um, anything to raise on that, Lisa?
It's all right, we're nearly at the end, Robyn, you're all right. Um, just quick, with the free parking days press release, it was agreed for the end of September. I mean, we're not technically at the very end of September yet, so you're all right, but I was just checking in, yes.
Okay, that's very important, um.
I did, I did ask the town clerk about it.
What, what, what was through the, um, of what could you, could add, um, uh, 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 press release?
It was an informative press release explaining why we were unfortunately unable to secure free parking for. The Remembrance Day Parade, and explaining that actually it would be costing the people of Buckingham a ridiculous sum of money, um.
Through the committee, can I even ask that it would be more appropriate if, if the mayor does that press release? If, if, if the mayor's happy, because I think it's more appropriate, if I do as chairman of the committee, I don't think it carries the same. Um, importance as if the mayor does it, is that agree?
But we should be seconded, and, and voted on, as much.
Seconded. That agree?
Oh, sorry, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, I, I, I just, I wanted to add more.
Stolen them, stolen them.
Are you happy with that?
Can I see the, the body of what's been written first, please, and I'll slot my, my quote into. A bit around that, if that's all right, thank you.
Okay, um, which case we move on to, to be best kept village, um, thing is, um. Are we happy to agree the recommendation, by everything, um, Fran?
Um, I think that, um, it's a, it's a shame that, um. We didn't do quite as well as we did last year, um, so, um, congratulations to Stoney Stratford. Who won that, um, cup this year, um, so need to do better next year, don't we? Um, but hopefully now that we've got, um, um, our staffing issues. Um, we've got, um, our, um.
Business engagement.
Business engagement officer, um, in place, in role, um, it can encourage, um, some of the shops. And businesses to take part in a, in a more. Um. Taking part, yeah, um, then, then, yeah, positives, that will do, thank you very much, my brain's not working properly again, um. Yeah, but well done to, um, the green spaces team and to, um. The estate's, um, administrator for all the work that they did on putting the bids together.
Yeah.
Um, and, yeah.
I think.
If it's been placed, I'll second that, we, um, we, um, we do it, as it are, if it's not being seconded.
I think you've proposed it, sweetie, so that's.
Don't use that.
No, somebody has. Passed it, and then I put, I think Robin closed it.
Okay.
Yeah, as I said, I would just say that this year, I think the ma- our farm have maintained the plants brilliantly. And they've lasted throughout that hot weather, and they've looked tremendous.
Yeah.
So can I ask that we put a note in the minutes thanking the green spaces, thinking they're. Because we don't want them, do we? We walk by them and look at them and whatever, and I, I mean, they have looked good, haven't they, I think.
Hmm, beautiful.
And we should thank people for what they do, um, which case, is that agree?
But can I, can I also add to that, can thank the office for their liaison with, um. Villiers, um, for sorting out the planters, which, um, there was, there was some, um, um. Personnel changes, um, within Villiers, um, which meant that they weren't aware that they were their planters, or they needed to do anything with them. I believe, um, so there was quite a lot of, um. Input from the office in order to resolve that issue, and their planters are now looking, um, still looking very nice.
Yeah, they are, I think they are, I think we should, well, you know, thank them for their cooperation, would that be agreed?
Yeah.
Um, and, and that'd be start of the communication strategy with, um, better kept village for next year. Building bridges, um, thank you very much, are we going to move? Members happy to agree the recommendation and move on to, um, those, I agree?
Yep, um.
Right, and, and we have to be that, then we'll move on to, um, Buckingham Blue. Um, which, um, this, this, leaving it in the.
Um, I was going to propose that we agree with it, so I was on the, um, judging panel alongside, um, Fran and Anya. And Tony, and we had lovely time going around and looking at all the gardens, it's absolutely fantastic. But we did say that it would be really good to see some more people getting involved, because some of the gardens, we'd wa- walked past some gardens. And we're like, why haven't they entered?
Yeah.
So, I thought, you know, the, the recommendation to, um, further foster community engagement, including expanding promotional efforts. And target outreach to schools, community groups, local businesses, simplifying the online entry process and making it accessible to all community members. I think they're great recommendations, and I propose to accept them.
Yeah, seconded.
You seconded it, Fran?
I think, I think. Um, I was, I was going to say that, um, pretty much, um, similar to what Lucy's saying. We were going around some of the, some of the other gardens, we thought that's amazing as well, why haven't they entered? Um, wonder whether we could have some sort of slips print- printed that we can put through people's doors. If we think that they've got a particularly good garden, say, why don't you enter it and, and, and. Am I able to make a proposal of that? Yeah, it's a proposal, yeah, we'll look at, look at some, some way of being able to. Have something for councillors, um, to, yeah.
Even if they're not on the judging panel, they still should be able to tell what. Is that proposed by Mayor?
So, is that, so we say that's an amendment, some of the proposal. So I'm proposing to accept the recommendations, the amendment could be that we add the recommendation that.
Yeah.
Councilors have, uh, slips or flyers that they're able to post through. People's letterboxes if they happen to walk past a particularly nice garden.
John?
I think we've got it within the recommendations, haven't we, it's contained within, isn't it? About.
Four point two.
Making it accessible and blah, 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 I think, yeah, it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
I don't think we need a special.
Yeah, completely, and you're happy that we all moved to vote?
Yeah.
We seconded it, voted seconded.
Yeah, sure.
Um.
Um, yeah, we, this has gone around year after year, and, and some years we, we didn't even run it. Because, you know, people weren't entering, um, and then we had one, one year or more. Where we were entering them for them, so, so they were getting, you know, um, winners' cup. And they haven't even entered, but I really like the idea to, um, you know, because. It's a lot of lovely with that fee, if you just get like a little note for your letterbox, like, oh, we think your product is amazing. Yeah, I love that, yeah, so, yeah.
John.
Through the autumn process, and people can nominate.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not just you apply for it, you nominate people as well, like you do nominate your brother, we haven't included that.
Haven't done previous years.
I think we need sort of, yeah, a bit of care for nominating people, because they obviously might not want.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I was thinking, put in a card for somebody's door.
It's an invitation, please, please, enter.
So, shall we, shall we just remove the cards this time, John? Then, but if, if, if that, if it was the right decision, if not, we'll look again. Can we move to the vote, please, all those in favour of being amended?
Hmm.
Thank you. In which case we'll move on to bike club, that's Debbie's town crowd, she's got two dollar bike clubs.
Um, bike club, it's, um, so it's to consider a proposal, um, that we agree and explore. Whether we budget for two or three dates for the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven financial year. So we've already spoken about the fringe with bike club, I won't go through that again, but, but it's laid out there, our involvement, so we. Prepared and submitted all the safety advisory paperwork, books to pay for the scout hub, books to pay for additional things. There was member, member of staff, which was myself on the day, and obviously we advertised as part of our fringe offering. Um, bike club booked to manage all the food traders, arranged tennis licence, um, which was provided by Silverstone Brewery, that is also Tim. He does bike club, so it's, it's got a leg in each camp, they also provided the entertainment and additional advertising. In light of this event, there was a conversation that started after the event. It continues beyond that, about whether there'd be operation, um, opportunities to collaborate for further. Bike club things in the future, uh, we looked at different possibilities, we talked about could we do one at Lace Hill, because there'd be no cost, that'd pay for the scout hub. Um, and obviously the overheads would be lower, um, and I also received the email that I've put down there from Tim himself, saying. He's due to start planning his events for twenty twenty six, and what he's going to be doing, and whether we would like to be involved in any way. Doesn't necessarily need to be sorted, but that's what he's going to be doing. So it's a, a, a look at what you would like to, to do, really, positive.
Um, members?
I thought the atmosphere was there, that was amazing, it was so just friendly and lovely. And I think if we could do a regular event, it would be really, really positive, um, and I think that we should. Um, take the opportunity.
Um. Well, I thought that it worked really, really well at Emberton Way. I appreciate it's not our land, so therefore there's, there's issues there, there's a horrible scout hurt and things. I wonder whether we can work something out that we could maybe alternate with Lace Hill. Um, in order, if you've got to get people hooked into that event and go into Emberton Way. Then the next one is at Lace Hill, we can then encourage people to use that Lace Hill. Um, facility more, because there, there seems to be a bit of a block with people in the town of going to Lace Hill. It's, it's, it, people seem to think it's too far out of town. I think the fact that you've got to drive through all those really quite narrow, and a lot of it shares space, streets in order to get there. There's not a huge amount of parking there at Lace Hill, um, I think that, um. Some sort of, yeah, just, just working around it in order to, um. Try and, try and, um, get the profile of Lace Hill, um. Raised, I think we could do something with that.
Lisa, but town clerk, I was going to say so.
Um, at, at this stage, the recommendation is just to budget for the two to three, I mean, bear in mind, we may have taken on additional land by then. We may have more than two venues that we might rally about, donating through. Um, I wouldn't suggest members make the decisions on the details, because we need to speak to.
We have no doubt on board, town clerk, we just agree the recommendation.
I propose that we agree the recommendation.
Right, again, word in favour, thank you.
Somebody seconded, yeah. I think so, Lucy.
Yeah.
It's changeable.
Um, it's double, it's double our rap there. Um, is it ours, mate? Um, right, in which case we move on to public emergency, and we're going to note that.
Yeah, noted, yeah.
Um, and I thank the officers for their work tonight, and the. Um, for the process for me, and can I thank Martin for keeping guard over me throughout the year. He's there to check me. Um, I, it's like, I, it's like having your own personal mind, uh, uh, he's been, and actually he's got a set of electric cables to me. If anybody misbehaves, just press the button.
That's how to do it.
But anyway, thank you very much, in which case, um, we, 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 we agree to press the leases which go out to any event. But anyway, thank you very much, in which case, um, we, 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 we agree the press releases which go out to any event. We've agreed that the mayor will do the press release for the important subject. And we've also agreed that we would look about the press release to do with the events, which we'll discuss outside the office, outside the meeting. In which case I'm suggesting that we close this meeting and we, um, and we're moving to private sector.
Date next meeting.
And date next meeting, which will be on the seventeenth of November. Um.
Sorry, I'm.
And in which case I recommend that we select your twelve of the local government app nineteen seventy two. The following items will be linked, um, disclosed, so on, so on, so on. Three, 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 yes. Right, thank you.